Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles here. Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Councilman Billingsley is absent today. Also, Councilman Cannon is absent today. Councilman Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for the freedom to assemble here today. We thank you for the freedom that many have exercised already today in allowing us to vote in a free country. And God, I just pray you'll be with our council today, that you'll give them wisdom, be with the mayor and his administration, just be with all the business that takes place here today, God. We want to bring glory to you because of the blessings that you have provided us, on us, in this city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on February 23rd.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of February 19th through the 25th.
So move.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
I'd like to ask Tom Bryant of the Alabama Humanities Foundation, Robbie Davis Smithsonian Institute, and Craig Scott from the library. Come on over. How you doing, sir? Good to see you. How you? Whereas the Smithsonian Institute in Washington DC is a museum and research complex consisting of 19 museums and galleries along with the National Zoological Park as well as research facilities known throughout the world. Whereas there were more than 28 million visits to the museums and national zoo in 2015, where admission to all Smithsonian facilities is always free to citizens from around the world. The Smithsonian understands and recognizes not everyone can visit Washington to see the museums and galleries up close and personally. The Smithsonian Institution's traveling exhibition services organize exhibitions on art, history, science, and circulates them around the country, including more than 40 traveling exhibitions to hundreds of US cities and towns in all 50 states where they are viewed by millions of people. Whereas the site has developed an interesting and delightful traveling exhibit called Hometown Teams, which recognizes that sports are an indelible part of our community and has helped to shape our national character. Whereas Alabama Humanities Foundation is a state affiliate of the National Endowment for the Humanities and fosters learning, understanding, and appreciation of our people, communities, and cultures. The Alabama Humanities Foundation encourages and promotes appreciation of literature, history, law, philosophy, and the arts through different programs and events and grants to help others discover and share the meaning of life found through humanities. The Alabama Humanities Foundation offers all Alabamians opportunities to explore the humanities through funded public programs such as seminars, workshops, lectures, exhibitions, documentary, videos, and films. The Gadsden Public Library in the City of Gadsden, appropriately known as the City of Champions, appreciates the confidence of the Smithsonian, the Alabama Humanities Foundation, and is proud to have been selected and awarded by them to host the Hometown Teams traveling exhibit from Thursday, March 3rd through Friday, April 15th, 2016, at the library. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, Alabama, do hereby proclaim March 3rd, 2016, is Hometown Teams and Humanities Day in the City of Gadsden, and encourage all of our students and citizens to visit the library to view this wonderful exhibit, to better learn and understand that few aspects of American culture so colorfully and passionately celebrate the American experience as sports.
You all know that we have a convention, a library convention, coming in in April. As a part of that, we looked around for something cool that we could bring to the city. And as the mayor read, the Smithsonian has traveling exhibits. And one is called Hometown Teams, and it has arrived. 21 crates, two and a half tons worth of stuff, and it's at the library right now, ready to be assembled in the next two days. So, we are very proud to have the Smithsonian exhibit come into Gadsden, and we'll get it for seven weeks. Our last week is going to be the week of the convention when all the librarians from around the state can see what they can also apply for to the Smithsonian and the Alabama Humanities Foundation. Tom Bryant represents the Alabama Humanities Foundation and was kind enough to award that to Gadsden. John Cavash is our expert residential scholar for the exhibit, and John's here too. Robbie Davis from Smithsonian won't arrive until this afternoon. But invite all of you to come to the library and see this exhibit, and specifically for the council and mayor, we have a ribbon cutting at 10:00 AM on Thursday. And we'd like you to join us, cut the ribbon, and see what this is all about. And what better way? It's, we're the City of Champions, all right? And this is all about sports. And Alabama's a sports state for sure.
Thank you for having me. First of all, I just want to say, you know, I drove into Gadsden this morning, and one of the things I like to do is look around and kind of get a feel for the city or an area. And I did this 12 other times with the Alabama Humanities Foundation on a prior traveling exhibit called The Way We Worked. And it's funny, you drive in, you see the ball fields, you see the sports complex, and you, you know, you see the high schools, and you realize, this is part of what makes us. And so ultimately, I just want, on behalf of the Alabama Humanities Foundation, and on behalf of the library and of all the other sponsors, just thank you all for having us. And I'd like to just keep, put this little bug in your ear, is that I did this 12 times with another exhibit, and it was fantastic. And a lot of times, I think each city said, oh my gosh, we finally have this exhibit here, and then when it was done, they thought it was done. I challenge all of you to use this as your springboard to start something new, not end. And so ultimately, use these seven weeks to make people think about history, your past, and instead of saying when it leaves that we're done, say we've just started. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And thank you again. Thomas Bryant, Alabama Humanities Foundation, and I have to send regrets from the Executive Director of the AHF. Armand DeKaiser is in Washington DC this week. But I will say, I've been working with this program for about five years now, and we've been partnering with Smithsonian for since 1997. And we have not hosted Museum of Main Street program with Gadsden before, and we are extremely delighted, and this was the natural exhibit to partner with your city. So thank you again very much.
I just want to piggyback a little bit on that about sports. I played it all my life, that's why I can't get around too good. But I loved it, and it teaches you a lot of things. Teamwork, perseverance, character, how to treat other people, how not to give up when you feel like everything's going against you. And I think it's so great, and that's why we really try to help all the sports activities we have here. But it really, really, really will make you learn to take care of yourself, and when you meet adversity, it will teach you to bear down a little harder to make things work right. So we appreciate you guys being here today. Thank you.
Amanda, is it, are they still taking information for the exhibit, or, I'm sorry, are they still taking information for?
Okay, the files that they have, they're taking oral histories. They're recording, but they're doing history projects. Of course, they have a digitalization project for these taking all kinds of oral history. So someone definitely interesting, sports related story that they want to develop in Gadsden, I heard it's called for at the library.
Yeah, okay. Well, good, good. And if anybody didn't hear that, there's still space for anyone that wants to record an oral history related to sports, they just need to contact the library. Just need to contact the library, so. There's no shortage of stories for sure. There's no, there's no shortage of stories.
You know that they're building a nice park down there, and she'll always take any funds that you might think that you could give to her. Billy and I have already given her a little money, so it would be a help to her, not only what she needs to do for this library convention, but also the park. It's going to be real nice. If you haven't been to the library recently, you know, they've got it all cleaned off, and the corner's going to have a new building in it. I don't know exactly what that is. Do you, Amanda? The building, they're building on the corner.
I think it's just going to be on the left.
Okay.
My boy, it's working. That ain't working. Yeah, test, one, two. Maybe that's a sign. We need to go and get a new city hall quickly. Tired of waiting.
I agree with you.
In a second. It's not working.
All right, I do apologize. We've got some technical difficulties, and you probably got the most soft-spoken council member up here now facilitating the meeting.
The rest of us, you can hear.
Yeah. Cut that one off. Take your gavel, you might need it.
We'll tell Councilman Cannon that you took his seat.
So better come down here with you.
Yeah, come on up.
Is that better? All right. All right. Once again, we appreciate the Smithsonian Institute choosing Gadsden for its traveling exhibit, and as always, we appreciate all the great things that our library does. Amanda, you do a great job, so we really appreciate it. And we, we often brag about what happens at our library, so, so really appreciate all the, all the hard work that you guys do over there. And while we're there, I want to thank you for all of the great Black History events that you facilitated and conducted over the month of February. And of course, it culminated with a fraternity brother of mine who came and spoke, and he is, he is definitely living history. Actually, probably one of the first individuals to initiate the Freedom Rider Movement. So, so we really appreciate that. Really, really appreciate it. Item number eight, A through C, under unfinished business. These nuisances on property located at 22, 226 Davis Street, 507 Cowell Street, and 922 North 33rd Street have been abated by the owner. Therefore, no action by the council is needed on these items. Item number nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 611 North Eighth Street in District 3, Beverly T. Heinz being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in November 2014. There've been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I spoke with her last summer, and she told me she was going to knock it down, but she hadn't, so we're going to go ahead on and abate it.
Okay. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 503 South 13th Street in District 5, RCL Taylor being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Come on up, sir. Sir, if you'll come over to the podium and just state your name and address.
Charles Taylor, 806 Fourth Avenue. This house has been abandoned property. I've been painting water, water bill in the house for the last eight, nine years. The roof don't leak, and there are no broken windows, and the house is locked. I just bought time to paint the outside of it.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in January of 2015. There've been no improvements. There was a permit taken out in January of 2015. We would certainly not be opposed to giving the gentleman the opportunity to complete the outside. The house is secure, but there are some, still some remaining issues, plus an abandoned vehicle on the property needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
I move that we table this for 30 days.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Thank you. You know, more than anything, want to give the council member for that district some time to review it. And is 30 days going to be sufficient, sir, for you to do everything you need to do?
Yeah, I can do a lot of things every day, but...
Okay. If you would, with that time and shortly after this meeting, you know, see Mr. Harbison here, and then, you know, he can, he can work out a plan with you. Okay. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1500 Adam Street in District 5, the estate of Frankie Ruth Thomason, Michael K. Stargill, Philip Irvin Stargill, Stephen F. Stargill, and Patrick D. Stargill being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in January of last year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Can I, Mr. Harbison, is that, is that a brick house? I can't see it. Is that a brick house? The first picture that shows where the car, is that brick?
No, that's actually a mobile home.
Oh, okay. Okay. I move to abate.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Harbison, is that, is that a brick house? I can't see it. Is that a brick house? The first picture that shows where the car, is that brick?
No, that's actually a mobile home.
Oh, okay. Okay. I move to abate.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2331 Chestnut Street in District 5, Ronnie E. Pollard and Superior Bank being last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of 2012. There've been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in August of 2012. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
We're just following in Council Cannon's footsteps. That's his district, and that's what he would want.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2900 Western Avenue in District 6, Timothy Frank Ramsey being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in December of 2014. There've been no improvements to the property. There was a building permit taken out in January of this year. We're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 508 Wilson Street in District 6, Leah Michelle Myrick and husband Alan Myrick being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you would, give us your name and your address, please.
I'm Leah Michelle Myrick. I live in 619 Davis Drive in Glencoe. There has been very little improvements going to the property. I just bought another building permit last month, well, end of January. We've had a family that was interested in it to buy it, to fix up for them to move into. We've had so many problems since the house was condemned. We bought equipment, tools, everything to work, start working on the house twice, and the house was broken into both times, and everything stolen. The door's been kicked in several times, but we really, we do want to try to fix the property.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Myrick. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in January of 2015. There've been no improvements to the property. Was a permit taken out in January of 2015, and also this year. We're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
this for 14 days, and then we will consider the resolution after the 14 days.
Okay. We have a motion to table, and there's a second. Is there any discussion?
Ma'am, you have 14 days to start doing something with the property, okay? You do something. All right, thank you.
We have, we have some things to talk about, but it's all been on the inside. We've left nothing for us to do. Get some paint, you back some small stuff that we're on pedal. We have Mr. Harbison.
Yes, ma'am. Get with Mr. Harbison and let him tell you exactly what he need now within those 14 days to try to bring up the code.
Because, because we're speaking, we're speaking to you from our heart. If Mr., if Councilman Cannon was here, it would be totally different. So we're just trying to give you 14 days, so.
And with that in mind, it may not be a bad idea for you to also, after this meeting, reach out to Councilman Cannon, have a conversation with him as well. He's got a, it's in there somewhere, you just have to find it. Yeah. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 14 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 14 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2215 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 7, Wade and Glenda Taylor being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in January of 2015. There was a building permit taken out two months later. There've been no improvements. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to adopt. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 14 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2215 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 7, Wade and Glenda Taylor being the last known
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items sixteen through nineteen are public hearings assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that's already been performed, and we have four locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. One-ten North Twenty-first Street in District One, State of Alabama, Marvin and Allen Cone and the estate of Millie Veezy Dolman. Fourteen thirty-one East Broad Street in District One, State of Alabama and Community Home Bank. Five-fifteen Abercrombie Street in District Three, State of Alabama and the estate of Ruth Quarles. Twenty-four oh-seven Alder Street in District Seven, Ramona L. Dunn. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four resolutions.
Item number twenty is a resolution authorizing roadblock for the Humane Society Pet Care and Adoption Center. This allows the center to conduct a roadblock on Saturday, April ninth, two thousand sixteen, at the intersection of Nakalua Road and Table Road at the campground entrance. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Just a point to note, this is the same weekend as Smoke on the Falls. We've been assured that there won't be any issues with a roadblock and traffic concerns or safety concerns, and this is a good weekend for them to capitalize on because of the traffic. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number twenty-one is a resolution authorizing agreement with L. and L. Marine. This is for the city to sponsor a couples' fishing tournament to be held September tenth through the eleventh, two thousand sixteen, and the amount is two thousand dollars. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number twenty-two is a resolution authorizing agreement with Crop USA. This is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament to be held March third through the fourth, two thousand seventeen, and the amount is thirteen thousand dollars. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number, item number twenty-three is an ordinance amending fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget, transferring forty thousand dollars from the demolition trust fund to the general fund for demolition expenses. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it on March fifteenth. New business. Is there any new business?
I'll start. Yes, Mr. President. I have several items, but the first one is a request from the Parks and Recreation Department, and I ask for unanimous consent for adoption, and this has to do with an agreement with the Couche River Teen Trail in memory of Barbara Walzak for a total of ten thousand dollars to sponsor a series of four fishing tournaments. And this is going to be held between March and November of two thousand sixteen at the Couche Landing. So, I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I believe this is an annual event, and it's also a money-making thing for our city, plus it's also recognition for our city in using the river, so it's a good thing. It's happening.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
I have another item, a request from Parks and Recreation, and this is authorizing an agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment for the Severn Bridges Band. This is an artist to perform at the Mod Glosser Amphitheater. This is going to be held July the first, two thousand sixteen, for the summer concert series, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
This item is budgeted for four thousand and five hundred dollars, and this is something that we do annually during the summer months.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
I have one other item, and this is from the engineering department, and I ask for unanimous consent, and this is a bid that was before rejected, but it's, the bidder has had irregularities, and so this bid has been amended to certain issues in the contract to be rebid.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
I have a couple. I ask for unanimous consent to consider an ordinance conveying one-oh-five Parks Avenue to Mickey Don Stevens and White Chan Stevens for the amount of eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt. Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have one other. I ask for unanimous consent.
We need to vote on that one. We need to vote on that first one.
Okay.
I believe this is a property that someone is purchasing from the city, and so this is eight thousand dollars that the city will get. So, in, even though we're tearing down property, there are some people who see property that needs to be purchased, so this is an amount of eight thousand dollars.
The check is in the vault. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
In further note, there was a rehab house that the city rehabbed, and someone bought it.
Okay. That's a good point.
Okay. Ask for unanimous consent through a resolution authorizing agreement with WVPN Channel thirteen for the two-hundred, two thousand sixteen digital and social marketing campaign for Smoke on the Falls. The budget amount is four thousand four, forty dollars.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I think, as we understand from upstairs, this is the first time that we've engaged in any, in this type of marketing campaign for Smoke on the Falls, so should draw a good bit of attention to the event and to increase participation versus previous years. So, really, this is a good event for the city, and it's been a successful event historically.
I think they're charging this year. What's the price? Have we got a price yet? Haven't decided on a price yet. Okay.
All right. Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have three. Request by Parks and Rec Department asking for unanimous consent to authorize agreement with Crescent Moon and the Warner Beatles to perform on June the third, two thousand sixteen, at the Mod Glosser Amphitheater. And the budget is four thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is a part of the summer series, concert series at the amphitheater, and this money doesn't come from the city. It comes out of a fund, if I'm correct, that they are...
Sponsored.
Sponsored, that the Parks and Rec, they go out and sponsors, get sponsors to sponsor these events.
Yeah. Some of these bands, you really need to notice these, like this one. This is probably a tribute band. They'll do a lot of Beatles songs. I know we've had Jimmy Buffett before at Severn Bridges Road. It's probably, I'm guessing, going to be one of the Eagles. I'm not sure, but there's real good entertainment at free after the first Fridays.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have one more from Parks and Rec Department, authorizing agreement with the Alabama Bass Federation Incorporated, an amount of five thousand dollars to sponsor a fishing tournament to be held from October the fourteenth through the sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, at Couche Landing. And that budget, like I said, is five thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is another fishing tournament, and I believe the city makes a little money on this, so, and this money comes out of the Parks and Rec Fund that they, they make money off of it, so.
The big, the big money that's made is all, some of these places bring in a hundred boats, and all those people come and stay in their motels and all. We get, we get a lot of money from sales tax and everything else from that. That's really where the money comes from.
Yep. Okay. Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any more new business?
Yes, sir. I have one more, Mr. President. This is from the Purchase Department. This is awarding bid number three-three-zero-six to Twin City Security LLC for security patrol services.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. This is a security contract with Twin Bridges, uh, Twin City Security, and the amount over three years, if we, this is for one year, but we can renew the contract over three years, and the total will be seven hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have one. Resolution one-eighteen, ask for unanimous consent to consider its authorizing agreement with Shane Givens Band. He's the artist to perform at Smoke on the Falls on Saturday, April ninth, two thousand sixteen, the amount seven hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any more new business?
Yes, President. I have one more, uh, two more, actually. This is Resolution one-seventeen, ask for unanimous consent to consider its authorizing agreement with Glenn Williams to perform at Smoke on the Falls on Saturday, April ninth, two thousand sixteen. The amount is five hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance one-twenty-six. This is amending City Code Section seventy-four, day ninety-one, Day Code forty-five, forty-nine, which is a special event license for Smoke on the Falls, twenty dollars.
Second.
That's for unanimous consent.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Yeah, I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
And, Mr. President, I believe we've always had the flu license, and we're adding the crafts. Is that true?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I think Parks and Recreation is quite busy now. This is another item from Parks and Recreation, which I like for unanimous consent, has to do with a concert to perform. It's by, with Peanut, an artist to perform at Smoke on the Falls, and this is for Saturday, April the ninth.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted. I move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards.
Good morning. I'm Christina Richardson with Park and Rec, and I'm here to tell you about an event we're going to do Friday at Nakalua Falls. We're going to be doing a free tree giveaway, and this is made possible through the Arbor Day Foundation and the Alabama Forestry Commission, Alabama four-H, Alabama Extension. They came to me last week and said, hey, we've got six hundred trees to give away, and so we went into action to put together an event, and this will be an annual event. Hopefully, this will grow year after year. The city is in the process of becoming a Tree City USA, and so with that, we have to have a Arbor Day proclamation, an event every year. So, in the future, this will be a bigger event. We'll have some educational stuff to go along with it. So, this will be Friday at Nakalua Falls at the Qantas Pavilion from twelve to two, and basically, when, when the people come in the door, we will hand them a bag, and they can get one tree of each species that we have available. And like I said, right now we have six hundred trees that may actually grow between now and Friday. They're kind of gathering from other counties. So, this is a statewide event. The state of Alabama actually declares February as Arbor Month. They don't just have an Arbor Day. They have an Arbor Month. So, typically, these events take place in February, but we've pushed it back due to weather and a few other concerns. But, like I said, it'll be Friday from twelve to two at the Qantas Pavilion, so encourage everyone to come out and, and get some trees.
Thank you. Okay. Remarks by the mayor and council? Mayor?
Uh, yep. Just a few things. First, I wanted to thank...
Uh, yep, I'll have to talk, just a few things, first I want to thank Mr. Preston Nix from Attala for bringing the plaque for us, we have the building we remodeled over behind Family Success, it's Etowah County Food Bank, and he does a lot of work on that, it's a really good project, and we're glad we could help out. Also, on the fishing tournaments and all the bands and the concerts, the fishing tournaments, a lot of those people come in as soon as Wednesday, and stay Wednesday, and Thursday, and Friday, and Saturday, and go home Sunday, and they practice to see where the fish are, you know, and what they're biting or not biting, so it's really a big plus for us, it brings a lot of people in here, and like Bob said, they stay in motels, eat, shop, and other things, and I told them, one of the big things, we had about 100 and something people, that if they go under the bridge every morning at about 4:30, the fish get together, you know, you hear they're biting in the, under the boathouses, or in the shallow water or deep water, if they go under the bridge about 4:30 every morning, they all get together and say where they're gonna be biting, and they wouldn't have to practice. That's a sorry joke. Oh, I couldn't pass out.
Is that not bad? I thought that was apropos, give him the hook.
Uh, yes, I like, three things, I hope that everybody that have not voted, please go out and vote, it's very critical that we all go out and cast our vote. The second thing is, I know that there are even councilmen that we have problems with, and we don't want to tear down houses, but I traveled 431 this weekend going to center, sorry to talk about Mrs. Shaver's little hometown, but I passed by, and if you go 431, there's a house, and it's still a house, but you can't see the house, for all the junk, I mean, it's supposed to be, I guess it's a trade day, but they don't have an ordinance to do anything about it, so if you, if you think that we're doing a bad thing, just travel 431, you don't have to go but by 15 or 20 miles, and you'll come back and appreciate the fact that we're trying to keep our city looking a little decent, or decent period. So just know that we're not trying to tear down houses, but we just want to make things look nice. And the other thing, I know that we are having the librarians to come, and they're talking about history, and I'd like to appreciate all the schools that did black history, but the one thing that I would like to see and know, that it's not just done in February, but it's done all the time, everybody needs to know their history, they need to know where they come from, and maybe that's the reason why we're repeating some of the things that happened a long time ago, 'cause if you don't know your history, then you tend to repeat. So I encourage parents, I know parents leave it up to the school, but I was telling them about some things that happened right here in Gaston that people didn't know, of things that happened right here in Gaston, good things, bad things, but our children need to know our story, and they need to know our history, and so I encourage the library, not just pick February, but pick March, April, May, and all the way, because as I sit here, I celebrate and remember black history, but I'm still black the rest of the year. So I would just like to encourage us to, to recognize that. But that's supposed to be funny.
Joke went over about like that.
Thank you.
Counselwoman Eccles?
My passion.
Counselwoman Worthy?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna take his time.
I talk for Counselwoman Eccles.
Speaking about, speaking back off what Dr. Toz just said about the tearing the houses down and the land, we, we have so much land, the city doesn't want your property, you know, if we knock the property down, you can make arrangements with the building department to make payments so you can get, you know, so you can keep your property. Then we putting together a land bank, and, and that's my question to the mayor, when is, we're real close on getting, all we waiting on is him to appoint some board members, and we are having this land bank in place where we can give this property away, or sell it for a little or nothing, you know, 'cause we don't want the property. You know, everybody think we knocking these houses down 'cause we want the property, that's not, that's not the case, we don't, we can't keep the properties up, you know, okay, number two, that what I want to talk about is black history, I was given, I had to speak at church yesterday, and Dr. Toz, Sunday, spoke at our black history program, and I was giving a call to the community, and we had a civil rights icon in the city Friday night and Saturday at the library, and I want to thank the library for bringing him, it's Attorney Bruce Borington, and he talked about some of the history, what happened in the past, he talked about the march over in Selma across the Edmund Pettus Bridge, and he said they had sent out a recon team first, three people went and walked across the bridge before they start marching, and they only, they came back with a good report, and only said there were state troopers there, they hid the horses under the bridge and behind the buildings, so the people couldn't see the horses, and then when they start the march, that's when, you know, the rest of it is history, that's a shame, but we need to know our history, and I, and the call to the community was to go vote, register and vote, because too many people have bled and died for that right to vote, and we just take it for granted. Then I asked him a question at the library, what can we do to reach the youth? And his answer was, do youth think they have arrived? But they haven't. That's why it's so easy for them to shoot one another and kill, 'cause they don't have respect for each other. But he said that they, doing it in a couple counties, where they put black history back in the school, and that was the second call to the community, to force the board education, to start back teaching black history, because if our kids know the history, they wouldn't be doing what they're doing. So that's, the community is gonna have to rally together and protest that, and I want to say, I was a police officer for 26 years, we're not anti-police, we're anti-police brutality, 'cause we know we have plenty of good police officers out there, I've worked with them for 26 years, but we have some bad ones, that's what we're calling out, we're not calling out the good ones, because Lord know, we need the police in our communities, until we get a hold of our kids, because we're gonna lose a whole nother generation, and we, then we got to target the parents, 'cause the parents gonna have to get involved, it's all about education, education is the key in black history, thank you.
Thank you, Counselwoman Worthy, Counselwoman Reed.
I guess the only thing I've got is just go vote, if you don't vote, don't grab. A lot of people have that problem, you know, they always want to run around and do it in their mouth, but they didn't go vote, so get the authority together and go do it.
Thank you, Counselwoman Reed. I'll say this, that probably one of the most profound quotes that Dr. King ever issued is, "The time is always right to do what's right." It's simple, but profound, and it's so true, and, you know, it's, you know, it's always good when you can use Black History Month as a springboard or catalyst to, to drive some of that activity. Today is a great opportunity for people to go out and vote, we have a horrific history in Etowah County of being a poor turnout county for voting, so we need to change that, we should change that today, 'cause there's a lot at stake. This is probably the poorest slate of presidential candidates I think I have seen in my lifetime, and so we really need to get out and vote, and try to drive the, the outcome of this election. Couple other things, I've, you know, had an opportunity to attend and speak at a Boys' and Girls' Club Black History Program, do want to commend Quez Williams for, for the event, it's a very difficult event, you know, the parents obviously can, can hold themselves together for a couple hours, but to, but to ask, you know, probably 30, 40 kids to sit still, that was, that was very difficult, very difficult, but, but I think one of the strongest messages, and it's in line with what Counselwoman Toz and Counselwoman Worthy spoke to, one of the things I reminded them of is I, you know, my, my family, you know, not just my, my parents, but my grandparents and many of my aunts and uncles often reminded me, not bitterly so, but often reminded me of events that they had to live through, and I shared with those young people, you know, some, you know, a scenario where a football team, high school football team, in order to have to play at a stadium, this high school football team would have to clean up after another local high school on Friday nights, so that they could play on Saturday nights. On Saturday nights, when they showed up to play, only half the lights were turned on, the concession stand was locked, the restrooms were locked, the locker rooms were locked, and they had to sell concessions out of the back of a pickup truck, popcorn, whatever else, hot dogs, whatever else they could pull together, and they used hand-me-down equipment, so the equipment that they used, the helmets and such was probably, you know, four, five generations old, and most of it didn't have all of the parts needed to function appropriately. And I asked these young people, what do you think that happened? And most of them didn't know, and I said, it happened five miles just down the road in Attala, Alabama, and it was about 46 years ago when it happened. I said, so that's not 100 years ago, it's 46 years ago. And I asked them, why do you think I'm sharing this with you? And, you know, they just, they, many of them said, you just want us to know, I said, well, I want you to know, but I want you to understand something, when you buy into some of these things that your peers are doing now, that disrespect, that legacy, and all the sacrifice that those folks had to make, you're discounting and throwing away all the hard work that they've put forward, and so, you know, again, you know, that's why black history is important, it's to keep in front of us the, the failures of our history, so that we don't repeat them, so that we don't repeat them, and also to give an ethnic group some, some resemblance of pride, so that they can realize that it's important and, and valuable to be who you are, and not try to be someone else. So, so again, I, again, I want to commend Quez Williams for a great program, I also want to take the opportunity to commend our Parks and Rec Department, they, they dominated our agenda today, but they do a great job, and, and this is not something that's just started, there are a lot of good events going on within, within Parks and Rec. I want to recognize Miss, friend of mine, Miss Teresa Streeter, raise your hand, Miss Teresa is, is a, is a business owner, so, you know, if, if there are any young females, in particular, black females, who are watching the council meeting, Teresa's loaded, you know, she's, she's, she's all right, she's doing fine for herself, and, and she has, she has a prominent business, and, and, and her operation is very much mainstream, she's not on the fringes of business, she's, she's definitely a mainstream, upstream operation, and it should go to prove to young, young women in general that, that you can do, that you can do it, it's, it's not a male-dominated industry, by any stretch, it can be done. Couple more items, and then I'll get us out of here, Miss Lisa Savage, do you mind standing up and just kind of waving so people will know who you are? That, that's not standing, Lisa. Just wave, wave to those folks back there so they'll know who you are. As I understand it, Lisa is gonna be leaving The Times, if I'm not mistaken, so we, we want to recognize you, you're a whole lot better looking than, than Andy Powell ever was, so we appreciate that, and we also appreciate the, the even-handed manner in which you report, I, I want to specifically call you out for jumping on the opportunity to report on our advocacy of the Marketplace Fairness Act, you jumped all over that and gave it a very significant amount of press, and, and we appreciate it, we got kudos from a number of our colleagues, not just in the state, but across the nation because of that, so, so I do appreciate that, and, you know, if you don't know her history, she's a chairman's award winner, you know, she, she's sandbagging on us now, but, you know, she, she's, she's done, she's had, she's had a stellar career, and we're gonna miss having you around, we're gonna miss having you around, okay? The last thing that I have here is that there will be no council meeting on next week, we'll be attending the National League of Cities Congress of Cities, so we'll be, we'll be in DC begging, I mean, we'll be in DC petitioning our elected officials for support for local projects, so, yeah, so we, you know, if you don't know how that process works, we go up there with a, with an agenda, the vast majority of us, we, we talk, and we try to establish who's gonna talk about what, and, and we, we ask for support, and they generally tell us, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm familiar with that, and yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll support that, and we might get one out of every 100 things we ask for, so if you, if you don't remember, I boycotted one year because I was just utterly frustrated, but, you know, I had to remind myself, it's not my job to get frustrated, it's my job to go and petition on behalf of the city, so I'll keep going, keep doing that, and, and I think many of us have committed to doing that, so if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
So move.
Uh, you're not going to watch.